I want to do, let's see. I wanted to do the Women's Club. I've been doing that for a year. And then Viper Cheer Squad.
You think I should have had a booth on that, huh?
There you go.
Where's the red pen?
Well, that's not the kind of booth I wanted. We talked about that. Actually, I think what you really need is... The guy that took over my place, he was going to, but his partner was in a wedding this week. She left this morning.
You guys ready down here? Are you guys ready?
Both of us went in there last night.
I guess Steve's missing. I think somebody's missing.
How long has he been? Well, he's been, he's been this far. Yes, yes, ready. Ready.
Okay, turn me. Am I on? Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our beautiful City Hall and our City Council meeting, our consolidated agenda tonight. We're going to call our meeting to order, and I'll have a roll call by our city clerk.
The record will reflect that all members are present with the exception of Mayor Protem Gronki.
And Mayor Protem Gronki is excused. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance and the invocation by Reverend Brian Anderson of the Center for Spiritual Living. Welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
So, in whatever way it seems appropriate, let's just close our eyes and breathe in this beautiful, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful summer day we're having. And I know that there is only one spirit, one God, one divine presence. And I know that people here from various religions acknowledge one God. And we are all expressions of the Spirit in our lives, to be good, to be worth, to really love, respect, support, and be effective in our lives. And I also want to know that this City Council is blessed, that everything that happens here tonight moves the beautiful city of Vista forward, no matter what's taken under consideration, no matter what's discussed, proposed. It's all working for divine right action, knowing that we live in a beautiful city that in Vista means to see high, to see broad, to see wider. And everything that happens here tonight facilitates that. I know that every member of the City Council is blessed, every staff member, our wonderful mayor, everyone who participates here in any way, whether they're observing, or presenting, or considering, it's all blessed. I give thanks for this truth. I just give thanks to the glory goes to God, absolute. I'll let it go now, and so may it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Anderson. Thank you. I have to read a Brown Act notice of simultaneous meeting compensation. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2001. So I will go on to the approval of the agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda at this time.
We did have a closed session, and City Attorney Joe Piper will bring us out of the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session. For closed session item CS1, no action was taken that is required to be disclosed at this time.
Okay, I have actually three proclamations today and some certificates to our annual appointments for our commission. So I'm going to have all the council members come down with me, and I actually am going to have some of them read the other proclamations. So we're all going to go down below, and we're going to do that next. Okay, the first proclamation is for the Women's Club of Vista. So I'm going to have the Women's Club members that are here all come up here, and we're going to read the proclamation to them, if they would do that. Maybe just stand all in front here, and then we'll all kind of stand, and then you have a photo opportunity also. They all come, these are our Women's Club. While they're coming up here, I will... Come on, Lori, over here. Okay. Here's the proclamation, and it says, "Whereas the Women's Club of Vista was organized in 1916 as a women's current events club, the Women's Club has always been very civic-minded and involved in many important activities, working with people in our community, children, women, families, youth, and veterans, as well as the Vista Fire Department. Whereas today's Women's Club members donate thousands of hours in volunteer service to nonprofit organizations, one of the many activities of the Women's Club is their annual Donation Day Luncheon, where the Women's Club of Vista recognizes many designated nonprofit organizations and students. Whereas at the May 9, 2012 Donation Day Luncheon, the Women's Club of Vista donated close to $50,000 to 35 nonprofit organizations. Their eight-year cumulative donations total is $460,000 to 45 designated nonprofit organizations, and $85,000 in scholarships to students of Vista High School, Rancho Vista, Buena Vista High School, Guajami Park Academy, Miracosta College, and Palomar College, since the Women's Club sold their clubhouse on Oak Drive in 2005. Whereas the Vista City Council congratulates the Women's Club of Vista on its dedication to the community and the members' motto, 'Along the friendly way we journey together to achieve the best things for country life.' Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate the Women's Club of Vista on 96 years of service." Long time. Anybody have been here since then? We congratulate... Marvel, almost, Marvel. Marvel, I'll finish this, but Marvel has a birthday coming up in a couple of weeks, and she's going to be 99. Marvel, raise your hand over there. Congratulations to Marvel. Sorry, I kind of interrupted my thing here. So, okay, so now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate the Women's Club of Vista on 96 years of service, longevity, commitment, and proud history in the city of Vista, and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, that's tomorrow, June 27, 2012, as Women's Club of Vista Day in the city of Vista. Congratulations, ladies. And so we want to have a picture, so come over this way. Everybody over this way. We'll just stand behind you. Nice to see you again. Nice to see you too. Come over here. Everybody, cut your clothes off. You're short, okay, Marvel, you're in front. Can you all get over here?
She'll fit it in.
Are you okay? Are you good on our clothes? Yay, congratulations, girls. Okay. Okay, I'll let, then the next proclamation, I will let Dave do it.
I'm honored by the mayor to be able to proclaim on behalf of our parks, and I'd like to invite our Assistant Parks and Community Services Director Bill Fortmueller to come forward, along with Division Managers Rob Anderson, Bill Crane, Natalie Livingston, and Parks and Recreation Commissioners Norm Halas and Gary Garretson. Please come up and... Oh, and Amanda Rigby. I'm sorry, Amanda. They didn't put your name on here. Whereas July has been designated nationally as Parks and Recreation Month, and at the state level as Parks Make Life Better Month, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities, including Vista, and whereas statewide public opinion research has shown that 98% of California households visit a local park at least once a year, 2/3 of households visit a park once a month, and 50% of households participate in an organized recreation program, and whereas residents value recreation as it provides positive alternatives for children and youth during non-school hours. Recreation also promotes the arts, increases social connections, aids in therapy, and promotes lifelong learning. And whereas parks provide access to outdoor spaces for children and adults to play and be active, and whereas parks also provide access to the serenity and the inspiration of nature and outdoor spaces, as well as preserving, protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community... Lot of things to be proud of. And whereas the Vista community, including families, youth, adults, seniors, businesses, community organizations, and visitors, benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, open space, sports fields, tennis courts, facilities, and programs provided by the city of Vista. And whereas the city of Vista urges all its residents to recognize that Parks and Recreation enriches the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods, now therefore, the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim July 2012 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the city of Vista. And I'd like to present this to...
Across the front right here. On everybody. No, you're fine. You're not blocking anybody. Congratulations.
Let's see, I would like to invite up the North County Viper Cheer Squad. All right, so get this. Whereas on April 22, 2012, in their inaugural season, Vista's North County Viper Cheer Squad took first place in the Show Cheer Division, the Performance Cheer Division, the Junior Stunt Group Division, and were named the overall junior division winners at the 2012 Sharp International Youth Nationals in Las Vegas, Nevada. This two-day event... So this two-day event draws hundreds of cheer squads each year. And whereas Sharp International is a youth cheer association that hosts many cheer camps and competitions called qualifiers, throughout the year, the Viper Girls took first place at each qualifier, scored high points, and were awarded an invitation to compete at Nationals. And whereas the traditional cheer season began in July 2011 with practices held two days a week, two hours a day, in addition to the practices, the Viper Cheer Squad has spent countless hours fundraising to pay for their competition and entry fees, and to help defray the cost of the cheer season. Good job. And whereas, as a whole, the cheer squad has maintained a solid B grade point average, and whereas a majority of the Viper Cheer Squad competed in special events at each qualifier, demonstrating their individual cheer skills and individual tumbling skills, their efforts were recognized by the judges, as many of the girls were awarded individual medals, team trophies, and spirit awards. Whereas Vista's North County Viper Cheer Squad is comprised of Alana Atkins, Jackie Cologne, Elisa Cruz, Tallula Dunven, Ilana Eads, Callie Mann, Angel Nunez, Christina Rodriguez, Sofia Ventura, Alyssa Viveros, and Angelina Viveros. And whereas the Viper Cheer Program staff members are Diana Mann, Executive Director, Janet Proctor, Assistant Director, Alana Little, and Student Coach, Vista High Cheerleader, Robin Burney, and Student Coach from Rancho Buena Vista High Cheerleader, Coach Whitney Vasquez, Rich Quinn, Honorary Member, Tumbling Coach, Jim Teck. And whereas the Vista City Council recognized the efforts and dedication of Vista's North County Viper Cheer Squad and staff members, their values of hard work, teamwork, commitment, and friendship, now therefore, the mayor and the Vista City Council members do hereby congratulate Vista's North County Viper Cheer Squad and staff members, and hereby proclaim Thursday, June 28, 2012, as Viper Cheer Squad Day in the city of Vista. Congratulations. So I'm going to give this to you. Pictures?
Yeah.
They're going to do a cheer.
Do-over, do-over. See, you guys are on TV now. We're not done. But here's your... Yeah, I was a cheerleader, actually. See, one of you might be mayor one day. I was a cheerleader in junior high and high school. Of course, that was like 55 years ago. Can't do it anymore, but anyway, cheerleaders never die. They become jazzercise instructors and the mayors. Okay, now, the next thing I have to do here is a more serious thing. We're going to do certificates of appointment for our incoming commission and committee members. So we're going to start with our Investment Advisory Committee, and these are people coming onto our committees. Investment Advisory Committee is Brad Peterson. I saw him here. There he is. Come on, Brad. Okay, that's good. You do that.
I don't cheer.
Okay. Oh, congratulations. Now, are we going to do pictures already? Oh, Andrea left, I think, so I think no pictures. Okay, no pictures today. Okay. All right. Parks and Rec Commission, and I guess I'll call them all up, Gary Garretson, followed by Norm Halas and Amanda Young-Rigby. These guys are new, oops, new on our Parks and Rec Commission. Congratulations, Amanda. Get the shaking right here. Our Sales Tax Oversight Committee, I don't know how many of those are here, Teen Miller, Mary Lou Cliff, Ken Leon, Dee Dee Timmons, and Norm Halas. So our Tax Oversight Committee. We meet again. Yeah. Thanks, Norm. Thanks, Ken. Congratulations. Our Senior Citizens Affairs Commission, Darcy Mulholland. Is Darcy here? I don't see her. Okay, Traffic Commission, Forrest Gale and Jill Rowe. It's Forrest. Congratulations. He's throwing out compliments up here. Okay. And our Planning Commission, Rick Rosler and Tom Flebine. Congratulations. Congratulations, Tom. Okay. And then we have certificates for outgoing members, which are... No more, okay. The outgoing members are, I don't know if any of them are here. We have Investment Advisory Committee, Kevin Connolly, I don't think he's here. Sales Tax Oversight Committee, Brett Schatzenbaum, I don't see Brett. Nope, and Planning Commission, Adam Bowen, David Hill. I don't see either of them here either, so... Okay, so that is it for all of our certificates. Okay, yeah, you got the thing here? I don't know where it is.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call up Lieutenant John Marion. Lieutenant Marion is filling in for our captain, and he's going to introduce our newest lieutenant, which is Mark Ryan.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Captain Russell couldn't be here tonight, but he did want me to express his thanks to the council and the mayor and the city of Vista for the support over the years, so it was really important to him, so thank you. Now I can introduce Mark Ryan.
Would you like to say a few words, Lieutenant?
Yes, I would. I'm Lieutenant Mark Ryan, newly promoted as of five weeks ago. Got 23 years on with the Sheriff's Department, worked the jails, courts, worked the cities of Poway, Santee, Lakeside, and Alpine. Spent several years at the academy in service, as well as the regional academy. Looking forward to being up here in Vista. I've had a great five weeks. It's definitely busy, busy up here. Personally, I've been married to my wife for 21 years. Her name's Paige. Got two boys, 19 and 17. And I'm really looking forward to the next couple of years, working with the council and serving the citizens of Vista. Thank you.
Question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Do you have a relation here in Vista that's been here for three generations?
No, I don't.
You don't know a relation?
No, we've got a lot of Ryans in the Santee-Lakeside area.
Oh, no. Okay. Good enough. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'll talk to you later about it.
Congratulations and welcome to Vista.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our Consent Calendar, items C1 through C7. I have one item here pulled by the public, item C7. Does any of the council want anything pulled on any of these items? See, no, no one, then I would look for the balance of the consent calendar, a motion and a second.
I'll move to pass the consent calendar.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Motion passes with Steve Gronki excused. And so the next thing, we will go to item C7, and... That's a statutory election to receive future property tax increment payments, and we have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker, Chuck Rabel?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent Drive, which just got paved. Brilliant job, absolutely wonderful job. Thanks to our friend George Weir that got the contract to do it. Statutory election to receive future property tax increments. I realize that this may be just procedural, and I question why on the agenda report the successor agency isn't called out. It does deal with the successor agency, one would think. The only other thing I want to mention is that I'm on the Oversight Committee to the successor agency. We had one meeting for the last two months, the meetings have been canceled, and we'll see if we have a meeting in July. With that, I know I've changed all your minds. Thank you very much.
Did you want an explanation of that? Why...
Yes, please.
Maybe our attorney can give an explanation of that, why it's...
Yes, the, actually, this item has nothing to do with the successor agency. It's an election by the city to receive the city's share of any future tax increment that might be due. So it's a city election, and it's funds that would be paid to the city, not to the successor agency.
So be it.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Gronki absent and excused. The next item on our agenda is item D1. It's a discussion item with our five-year capital improvement program and capital project budget for 2012 and 13. And we're going to have... John, you're going to take it?
Thank you, Mayor. John Connolly, Community Development Director, Director of Engineering. I have with me Robin Putnam, who's our Sewer Program Director. We'll give you a brief overview of the CIP here, and then take any questions. Just waiting for my presentation. The CIP is a five-year budget program that the city adopts on an annual basis. The tool is intended to cover a five-year period to ensure that planning is accounted for and that budgeting is provided for projects on a five-year term, but we approve the budget only on an annual basis. So tonight, we're asking the council to review a number of projects that are in the CIP that are carryovers, a few new projects, and talk about the funding sources. But the funding that you're approving as part of this document is just for this next fiscal year, 1213. The CIP budget document was provided to all the council members. It includes a summary of the funding sources and budget uses, which I'll cover on a project-specific basis, as well as categorically, and then go over some project details with you. I'm going to cover the general, we'll call it general categories, and the streets and signals, and then Ms. Putnam will cover the sewer projects. So just briefly to cover some of the achievements that we've had in the past fiscal year as part of the CIP program, excuse me. We've completed sidewalk projects on Grapevine Road, Maryland Drive, and West California Avenue, the majority of those done with redevelopment funds and Safe Routes to School money. So one of the impacts that we'll probably see from redevelopment is a lesser degree of sidewalk improvements in the future, but to the credit of the Redevelopment Agency, they have done some good projects in the redevelopment area in the last year. We did street rehabilitation on East Vista Way and North Santa Fe. That was our last overlay project. Made improvements at the intersection of Sycamore and Melrose, also at Sycamore and Engineer to accommodate increased volumes and capacity. We installed signals at East Vista Way and Oak Drive, as well as North Santa Fe and East Drive. Those were the top two priorities on our signal priority list, and we had a number of Buena and Vista sanitation, sewer rehabilitation, and replacement projects. There are a number of funding sources included in the CIP. The pie chart that's shown on the overhead has a total of 19 different funding sources. For purposes of organization, the staff's broken into three general categories. Those are general, which include park and public facilities fees and redevelopment funds, streets, which are monies that can really only be used for transportation improvements, primarily gas tax, deferred street construction funds, drainage fees, traffic fees, and transnet funding, which is regional funding that we get from the half-cent sales tax from Sandag. And in sewer, Vista and Buena have expansion and replacement funds, and we have a number of state loans that we're carrying for future projects. The categories for each of the projects are broken down again into those three general categories. In parks and recreation, we expect to use about $323,000 in funds this year. Public facilities, $50,000. Redevelopment, about $500,000. Streets, 3.2 million. Traffic signals, 521,000. Drainage, 139,000. The majority of the CIP budget is in sewer. As you can note, in Vista and Buena Sewer, there's $28 million out of the total $33 million budget. But I just gave you categorical breakdowns there to give you a rough idea of where the money's being spent. So important to note, the majority is being spent in the sewer area, and the second highest level would be streets for reconstruction, resurfacing, and expansion. So I'm going to go through the categories and the individual projects that are under those categories. Just briefly talk about the funding that's proposed for this next fiscal year and any carryover budget that's included for those projects, and then I'll kick it off to sewer. Under the general category, there's a... The Creek Walk project is the first on the list. This is a project that was constructed back in 2010. It's an extension of the trail between Capri Drive and Ponderosa Drive. And there's just carryover money in this year's budget for maintenance obligations for the mitigation that we constructed as part of that project. The Paseo/Santa Fe Memorial Park is another project that has a fair amount of carryover funding. We're also adding funding to that, which is coming from public facilities fees. And that's the concept, to build a linear park across from Sonic off of South Santa Fe. The Wave Solar project is $20,000 in public facilities fees that we're adding. Please, councilman.
Oh, yeah? I don't think you're on.
There. On the wave, is that the total amount that's going to be spent on that one?
No, there's a carryover of $130,000 that's already in that account, so we're adding $20,000 to it for a total of $150,000. And that's to add solar panels to heat the wave pool.
You don't have any bids on what it's going to cost or anything, do you?
No, we have not sent that project out to bid. We expect doing that late this summer, depending on if there's any changes in the city's dealings with the wave property. The Vapa Rec Facilities is a grant-funded project that's still moving forward through the design process. The city's assisting the school district with that project. And the final parks project is Thibodeau Park totlot. We have a number of totlot replacements that we're doing on an annual basis. This is the first of about five projects. Under public facilities, we have a welcome sign replacement program, which is continuing to replace the Welcome to Vista signs. The old signs are shown at the bottom left, the new signs at the bottom right. A slightly modified version will be built, but it's... that's the concept. There's about $100,000 in carryover money from that project that's going to move forward. The sports park mitigation is mitigation obligations from construction of the sports park. Again, that's a five-year monitoring and maintenance obligation that the city's carrying forward. And we have a transition plan that was adopted this year, which is basically a review of all of the city's facilities to determine what accessibility improvements are needed. And so we'll be budgeting a small amount of money on an annual basis to try to take care of those and knock those out as they become available. On the redevelopment side, there's not a lot of money that... Councilman Lopez?
Sorry to interrupt you like this, but on the... Those Vista signs, the new ones, who's doing those signs?
The city will be issuing a bid proposal for those signs, hopefully late this summer.
Oh, so we don't have anyone yet?
No, we haven't gone out to bid with it yet.
Okay, thank you.
On the redevelopment side, we haven't budgeted a lot of money in this year's budget, primarily because of the issues that we're dealing with the state. The majority of the program funds and redevelopment are carryovers. We are adding a small amount of money to the Paseo/Santa Fe Streetscape Project. That's a street design for the Santa Fe corridor from Main Street down to Civic Center. That's deferred traffic construction money. And for the Vista Village/West Vista Way intersection, that's the North County Ford DDA to remove the turn lane and make street improvements there. And we're adding $500,000 in redevelopment money there. That is money that is in our recognized obligation payment schedule. Under the streets category, we have a number of projects. I'll go through them pretty quickly. The SR-78 corridor enhancement is a landscape project for the whole corridor. We've had on the books for a long time. We've done some stretches of it. This next fiscal year, we expect to install landscaping at the Vista Village interchange in the medians on either side of the interchange, and that's a carryover. West Vista Way Design, another carryover project that's designed of the widening of West Vista Way between the city boundary and Melrose. Grapevine Road Sidewalks, this is a completed project. We're just wrapping up, so there's a carryover, a small amount of money to do the as-builts. Maryland Drive Sidewalks, we're adding some additional funding and transnet funding. And there's a number of... a fair amount of carryover there. That's a project that's close to wrapping up as well. East Vista Way Rehabilitation, this was the undergrounding of utilities on East Vista Way. It's wrapping up, it's a carryover. The Inland Rail Trail is a Class 1 bike facility along the North County Transit Rail Line, which has been transferred over to Sandag. We still have a fair amount of grant funding that we're using to assist Sandag on the staff side in the design and right-of-way acquisition process. The SR-78 eastbound ramp at Sycamore is being added some transnet funding, and that's a project that's moving through design. We hope to bid that next year. Foothill Reconstruction is a completed project. There are some drainage improvements that are remaining, which are under construction right now. That's a carryover. Street Rehab and Resurfacing is our current street overlay project. That's the George Weir project, which is doing Bobeer Emerald Crescent, which Mr. Rabel identified, Alta Vista, and Beaumont. West Vista Way Widening is the Phase 1 widening of West Vista Way between Emerald and Grapevine. That's in design right now. That should go out to bid this next year as well. Monovista Street Improvements is sidewalks in front of Monovista Elementary. That's a school safety project. Shadow Ridge and South Melrose Intersection, that is improvements at the intersection for capacity. Eucalyptus Avenue Sidewalks, another Safe Routes to School project, which is a sidewalk along Eucalyptus, just west of City Hall here, between Indiana and Civic Center Drive. And Maryland Drive Sidewalks, that's the last phase of sidewalks on Maryland Drive to connect between North Avenue and Olive. Those are all projects that have carryover funding. There's no new funding for any of those projects. The projects that are requesting new construction money, Melrose Way Sidewalks, this is another Safe Routes to School project near Breeze Hill Elementary. The $484,000 in funding for that is... I'm sorry, traffic impact fees. The next annual overlay project is... We'll follow the George Weir. This is the same concept of resurfacing and rehabbing a number of our streets. We're waiting on a pavement management system program that's being prepared right now before we determine the final number of streets that we'll do as part of that program. Any of the additional funding that's left over from the current overlay that's under construction will also be transferred into this account so we can do the maximum number of streets in the next overlay. Two new projects are being added to the streets' construction. That's South Melrose and Hacienda. That's the intersection in front of Valero Gas there, where there's a real constriction on the northbound right turn. We're trying to acquire right-of-way there and finish that right. And North Avenue Widening, which is North Avenue, the stretch between Melrose and Maryland. There's a real pinch there near the elementary school, which we're going to begin some design work to try to widen that stretch to a four-lane road. Maintenance projects. This is primarily money that's funded for Public Works to do street maintenance. That includes rehab of curb and gutters and resurfacing of streets in the form of slurry seal, where there's not a full reconstruction required. And a pavement management system plan that I mentioned before, which is basically evaluating and ranking all of the streets for overlay in the future. There's three current signal projects that are in design. That's East Vista Way at Taylor, North Melrose at West Los Angeles, and Emerald and Date. All of these projects are receiving additional funding. This is all traffic impact fee funding, so required to be spent on street projects. We also have a signal modification program where we have to do citywide work on signals. We budget some money for that on an annual basis. And we're proposing a new project and a transportation communications plan, which is essentially a plan that will allow better communication between the city's signals and the Civic Center here, where we control the signal system. Under the drainage category, there's one... I'm sorry, two storm drain projects. One is Boba Link Storm Drain, which is a carryover project with a large amount of funding that we're adding, some additional traffic impact fee funding for. That's an underground storm drain to serve an area that has very poor drainage. Townsite Storm Drain is a replacement of an existing pipe. It's corrugated metal pipe that's failing. We're adding some deferred street construction money to that. And we're proposing a new citywide drainage plan, which is a plan to evaluate and prioritize failing drainage system pipes. And that completes the streets and general projects.
If there are no questions, I'll jump right into the sewer portion of the presentation.
I do have one question. Mr. Conley, the North Avenue Widening, that's a new project?
That's correct.
And I missed, I guess, where exactly that is. Is that right in front of the school, or closer to Melrose?
So just east of the school, between Melrose and Maryland. There's a pinch point on North Avenue where it goes up over the hump before you get to the school, where the improvements are made. So when the school was built, they widened North Avenue. So between Melrose and Maryland, there's a real pinch point, and then it widens out. So we're looking at widening that pinch point between Maryland and Melrose.
And when does... do you plan on doing that?
We have $125,000 scheduled for this year to start the design process, so we're hoping to get the design work done and hopefully go to construction next fiscal year, depending on the availability of funds to do it and what the design work's going to require.
Okay, and then a similar question on the Hacienda and Melrose. When would we be able to do that?
The money that's funded for that improvement is intending to fully fund the construction. We're... The gas station owner's going through a yeasement process right now, where we think we're going to be able to obtain the right-of-way from them through that process. So hopefully, within the next 12 months, that should go to construction.
Okay, thank you.
As Mr. Conley mentioned, there is a lot of funding in the sewer area, and the main source of this funding are fees that people pay for sewer. And I wanted to review that in January of 2008, both the city council and Buena Sanitation District Board of Directors approved substantial sewer rate increases to fund these capital projects. The Vista rate increase was 6%. The Buena increase was 3.5%. And both of these rate increases were for five years. So each year for a five-year period, the rate increase was in effect. I know the council members here, a lot of questions, probably especially around tax time, because most people's sewer bill go on the tax rolls about why are sewer rates increasing every year? So I'm hoping my presentation will help you answer those questions. What happened right in the 2008 timeframe was a sewer master plan was approved. And what the master plan really does is it identifies pipelines that don't have enough capacity to handle either current or future flow. The other thing the city undertook was complete televising of all of the existing sewer lines. And between these two processes, all the projects in our capital program were identified. So a lot of these little segments of sewer lining that you see in our capital programs, and I'll get to that soon, came from this whole televising project. So what it did was it allowed us to see which lines were currently in pretty good condition and really didn't need any work, and which lines, for a whole host of different reasons that sewer lines need repairs, needed work. And we could move forward on those areas only. In last fiscal year, there were a few sort of pilot projects that went forward that involved lining of sewers and also a big emergency project that we undertook at Encina on the Buena Outfall Line to make sure that we weren't going to have any problems. The council may remember, we had a big problem with the Vista-influent line at Encina. And after that happened, we looked at our Buena line, and there were issues there as well. So to head off anything that could happen, we undertook that project immediately as a change to one of our first lining projects. There's... The city, as you know, has... administers two different areas of sewer. One of them is Vista. It covers a lot of the city, but there's a big chunk out of the middle of the city and into the county that Buena Sanitation District covers. So the first projects I'm going to talk about are Vista. The Vista sewer system is more extensive. It's a little bit older, and we need to make more investment in that system right now. So the five-year CIP includes $77.7 million in construction projects. About $37 million are going to be borrowed from the state. And then the other 40 million will come from the sewer fund. The sewer... When we say sewer fund, that's fees that were collected from the ratepayers. That's where the money in the sewer fund comes from. $36 million of that $77.7 million will fund Vista shares of joint projects with Carlsbad. Those projects are located within the city boundaries of Carlsbad, but mainly, both of them carry Vista sewage. The first project is 89% Vista sewage and 10% Carlsbad. It's the one near the Buena Vista pump station. And you've seen Jefferson Avenue closed. That's our current sewer project. And then the other large one is the rebuilding of the Agua Herianda pump station. It's also in the city of Carlsbad, but we're still over 60% responsible for those improvements because of the amount of sewage that passes through that's from Vista. The other thing to note is, outside of the $77 million, we have another $12.2 million that we pass through to Encina because not only does the city of Vista have a capital program, but Encina also has a capital program. So that's planning for a five-year period. It's not as if we're going to give it to them in one year. But what we do is, they have a very extensive CIP. They look at what their needs are going to be in the future and make sure to plan and let us know so that we can plan for that in our financial documents as well. The Buena CIP budget overview is less than Vista. Vista was $77.7. Buena is $41.5. All of the money for the Buena projects will come from ratepayers. And there's an additional $4.8 million beyond the $41 million here that's also passed through to Encina for the capital projects. Buena is not as significant an owner as Encina, as Vista is, and you can tell that by the difference in the amount that Buena contributes to Encina's capital projects. There are a lot of major projects underway, and you probably remember them all because you've awarded all these contracts. They're pretty significant. Buena CIP 8173 is the Buena Creek Pump Station ductile iron force main replacement. That project is currently underway, nearing completion Wednesday night, which is tomorrow night, will be a key time where we start to go out and tie in this new line in the middle of the night. We... The next project that you recently awarded was Buena CIP 8070, which is Watson Way Sewer Replacement. We talked about two different kinds of projects. One that's identified by the master plan as under capacity, and this Watson Way project would be one of those. There's... This involves upsizing and realigning sewer pipe, and it's a $5.7 million project, so it's very significant. And then we have the Carlsbad project, which I was just talking about, that goes from the Buena Vista pump station down Jefferson, and it's a $3.9 million project. And it's going along fairly well, and we're looking forward to completing that one in the very near future as well. Another major project that's underway, or will be underway because it's the next item on your agenda, if you approve the award of contract, is CIP 8164. And this is a very significant project that involves lining Vista's main sewer main from La Tortuga to Thunder Drive along Hacienda.
Robin, Frank has a question.
Yes.
Excuse me. This is just Carlsbad and Vista on this, correct?
This on... 8164, this main line, or...
Isn't Oceanside part of this, too?
Oceanside is not part of our sewer system. At certain times, we will send sewage to Oceanside, and they will send sewage to Encina. At this point in time, because we have a flow transfer agreement between the two of us. But usually, there's tiny bits of flow that are exchanged with Oceanside on a regular basis. But when large amounts of flow are exchanged, it's primarily due to problems with sewer lines. They have their own sewage treatment plant. They're not a partner at Encina. Any flow that Oceanside contributes passes through Vista, and we're the partner that's responsible at Encina.
Now, how do you determine our share?
At...
As to any replacement of anything. Is it done... Is it done by household? Is it done by gallons?
Oh, you mean as to projects that are joint Vista-Carlsbad projects?
Yeah, to determine our share of it.
What happens is there's a bunch of flow meters in the lines. So we know exactly as the flow leaves Vista, how much there is, and we know as it goes into Carlsbad and the pump station, how much flow they've contributed. So it's measured along the way. And this is actually how we're billed every year by Encina, too, is by how much flow we contribute there.
So basically, it's monitored and we know that we're paying our share?
Yes. And every project that we, project agreement we enter into with Carlsbad, we go back and review and make sure the numbers are still what they were when the agreement, the original agreement to be partners was signed. Then we have a bunch of major projects that are also planned for 2013. And I didn't want you to think that we're spending all this money on projects and they're all in Carlsbad. You're going to see a lot of activity, although most of it won't be above ground in Vista. These are all lining projects, but CIP 8165, which is in the Vista District, and then CIP, I'm sorry, 8165 is in Vista, 8175 is in Buena. And each one of those is going to rehabilitate over 250 segments of pipeline. So these two projects together are going to be a whole lot of sewer lining activity within the city of Vista. And then the other project that we're looking at undertaking in 2013 is construction of some sewer line along West Vista Way between North Melrose Drive and Thunder. And then I wanted to point out that the CIP is carrying forward funds for the two major Carlsbad-Vista projects. And what will be happening is we'll be doing design and property acquisition and preparing for award of contract on the, our share is 34, 30.4 million, and the whole project, which is 8125, is $45 million. So that's a very significant project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions about sewer projects or sewer program. But staff is recommending that you approve the 2012-13 Capital Improvement Program budget and authorize the associated appropriations and fund transfers.
Gee, I have one speaker. Do you want to ask your questions first? Or do you, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor Aguilera.
I just had a question on the $37 million that's being borrowed for the Vista sewer.
Yes.
What does, how's the financing work from the state on that?
The way that it works is as each project comes forward, the state signs a finance agreement, and the council authorized the city manager to sign these finance agreements. So so far, we have two approved finance agreements with the state. And what they do is they'll actually look at the bids. And so even though, let's say, our state award is 6 million, if we get a nice low bid of 3 million, the state's going to loan us actually $3 million. And then they are paying, the loans are paying for construction only. All the design and planning and everything else are being paid by Vista. And then one year after construction is complete, we are obligated to start paying back the loan. And the interest rates on the two projects that we've signed finance agreements with so far have varied from 2 percent to 2.2 percent. So they're very favorable, low-interest loans, and we're going to be paying them back over a 20-year period.
Okay. Thank you. One second.
Councilor Lopez.
Thank you. And who found those loans for us?
That is a great question. And I would defer to Mr. Jepson, but I believe it was probably Mr. Jepson who found it.
Oh.
Yeah. Our consultant, which you approved the ongoing contract for services, one of the things that DUDAC brings to the city is a huge knowledge of wastewater issues and loans and materials and design and products that, you know, maybe perhaps one staff member on their own wouldn't have.
Oh, because I thought, I heard it was you, but.
The state loans? No, we had a long discussion about not doing bonding for the big Carlsbad project, which was the original financing plan.
Yeah.
And we decided to go with a state loan for that project instead of trying to do public financing.
I would say that Ms. Putnam and Elijah Hagie from the Engineering Department have been very instrumental, though, in applying for those loans and processing them and working through all the nuances with the state. Thank you.
Are you ready for the speaker? It'll be Chuck Rabel.
Good evening again. Just a couple of questions. One, there is no skateboard park in the budget. Is that correct?
It's an unfunded project.
And it's not a question?
Boys and Girls Club still want one, right?
Say again?
The Boys and Girls Club still want it there?
I have no idea. I'm not in charge over there, nor am I in charge here.
Well, I know you're not in charge.
But I would.
The skate park is listed in the unfunded section at an estimated price of $2 million.
I would put forth the idea that there's plenty of city-owned properties, and there is money and there was a promise, and we're not doing well by that generation. And let's hope that none of them get hurt on the roads and the sidewalks. But the other point that I can.
Let's say, you know, the Skateboard Coalition, actually, they met with, on the Parks and Recreation, they had a committee, and they met and they looked at different, they looked to find a place to put it, and there wasn't a place that they could find.
And redevelopment properties were taken off the table beforehand.
Well, we still don't know what we're going to do with those, so.
Oh, okay. Well, again, those kids didn't have a chance to vote for Prop L, and they're going to pay for 30 years.
A skate park was not on Prop L.
There was a skateboard park here. There was a promise.
There wasn't on Prop L, but we found a place. The Boys and Girls Club said they would take one, so we're working, we have to find some money. So next issue.
All right. Last question, if I can. Streets are budgeted at $3.2 million. And the number that I have for the current gas users' tax is $3 million. I don't know where the gas users' tax went, but it's in the current document at an amended $1 million.
We budgeted $1.9 million of gas tax money in the operating budget for Public Works to do maintenance, and the remaining money is in the CIP and the streets rehab program.
A million nine?
Yes. This is not in this document. It's in the operating budget that was approved.
I appreciate that. And the former, the budget from last year had just over $900,000 for salaries and benefits for what was called the gas tax in the Public Works.
So this money is intended to be used for slurry seal and roadway maintenance projects that Public Works is managing, different from our resurfacing projects where we do digouts and reconstruction. It's minor maintenance. And when you combine the two, it adds up to almost $1 million.
Yeah, yeah. No question about that.
We're spreading the money farther this year because we're doing more streets.
I do appreciate the explanation. Thank you. It just seems weird. We got over $3 million, and we only put $1 million into capital improvement. That's all. Thank you.
With that, if there's no other questions, oh, I see people here. Okay. Councilor Aguilera? Are you, no? Lopez, you have something else to say?
Yes.
And then Councilor Coles.
In this book right here, it does say that you can add something if you desire to. It does say it. If you decide that you want to put the skateboard park, you can put it on there. You can put it on there. In the past, we have had things like a fire truck or a maintenance truck. We have put money aside every year. We put money aside to eventually, when we have a problem with a vehicle or something, you know, there's money put aside for that. I feel that this should be put on there. Maybe we don't have the money today, but I think at the end of the year, when we finish up some of our budget items, there is money left over. Maybe we can put some of that money aside for that. And not, it doesn't have to be done next six months, but the thing is that eventually you'll have some money in that little pot so you can do something. The Boys and Girls Club skateboard park is not going to be a skateboard park for the older kids. It's just going to be for little kids. And we're still in the same situation as we were for the last five years trying to put in a skateboard park. I'm sorry, but I'd like to see this council strongly look at this, to put it on there, and also to keep in mind that these kids need a place to play. I know it's a no-no, but please say yes, yes, once in a while to it. Thank you.
Councilor Coles.
Yeah. In response to that, the proposal for the skate park at the Boys and Girls Club actually would have accommodated children up to the age of 18. So it's not just little kids. And it may not be sufficient for what the coalition has desired and wanted. And I've met with some of the people who are in our business park, who run skateboard operations, and they would like to work with this as well. This has really been a dilemma. We're in a time when we're having to decrease budget millions a year for the last three years. A skateboard park, as was mentioned, is a $2 million estimated project. And we, every year when we adopt a budget, we seek input from our citizens, from our, the people who use our services. And we have used that in kind of prioritizing our projects and where we design our budget. And we just don't have the money to do everything. We, when I met with the skateboard coalition people, they mentioned that between 25 and 30 young people use the skateboard park at a time. $2 million to provide that for 25 children or so is, in healthy times, yeah, maybe we could do that. But we don't have the kind of money. We need $3 million for roads that tens of thousands of people use. So my heart goes out. I would like to continue working to seek a solution to the skateboard park. To characterize young people voting on Prop L, a skateboard park was not included in a project list in Prop L. Had it been, we would have a skateboard park, but it was not. So with that in mind, I'd like to move to adopt this resolution.
I'll second it.
I have a question on that.
What, the motion?
No, not on the motion, but I want to reply to Mr. Coles.
Well, let's cast our votes first, okay? Can we do that?
Let's do the vote first.
Motion passes with Councilor Lopez voting against it, and Councilor Cronky is absent, excused. Okay, what?
What? You weren't here, Mr. Cole, or Mr. Aguilera, when all this went down. When we had a skateboard park, we did promise to kids that we would put a skateboard park in.
Frank, I was here. We did not promise.
Wait a minute. We put, excuse me, I'm speaking. Please, mayor.
You're not telling the truth.
We put half a million dollars aside for the skateboard park. Times got tough, so we borrowed from that money, that half a million we put aside. When you borrow money, you got to pay it back. Half a million dollars that we borrowed from the skateboard project, we did promise that to those kids. If putting half a million dollars aside for that is not, that is a promise that you made these kids, and it's time that we start. Now, you didn't know, but at Wildwood Park, when I was there, meeting with Mr. Vance, he promised those kids that. And it's time that we get going on this, instead of just delaying, delaying, delaying. Let's do something for these kids. At least show them that we're trying to do something for them. I know it's tough, but you know, whenever you want to buy something, you put it in this paper and we okay it.
There's safety items and roads.
Well, there's safety items when another kid gets killed on the road alive.
I'd like a proposal from you of what we could do. You know.
I will work on it.
Right now, but come up with a proposal.
Can we just move on?
I will by the next meeting.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that special thanks should go out to Deb Lopez, who is in our Finance Department. She's a management analyst who, over the last year, has really overhauled the Capital Improvement Program budget. And so I just want to say a special thanks to her.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to oral communications. So.
We have one more.
Oh, we have D2. I'm sorry. Okay. D2. Is that Robin again?
Would the council like a staff report on this?
Would you like a staff report? You want to make a motion?
Move to adopt.
Adopt it?
I'll second it.
Councilor Coles made the motion.
You got a first and a second?
Yep. I'm moved to adopt.
Okay. Cast your votes, please. That motion passes with Councilor Cronky excused. So then we'll move on to oral communications. And I have two, I have two speakers here. First one is Tom Fleming.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to address a statement that was made at your last council meeting that was a tack on me and my credibility. I was, it was said from up there, Mr. Lopez mentioned that I have a sign over my business that I'd been told to take down and that I had refused to take down. After the meeting, excuse me, after the meeting, I asked City Manager Patrick Johnson and John Conley to, if they would research it and look into it for me. They did, I assume, because I got a call the following week from Patsy Chau. She said she had done research and looked as far as she could dig onto any, anything that made any kind of comments directed to me at all. The only thing she found at all was on August of 2011, there was a letter from a concerned citizen asking, mentioning that my sign was an illegal sign and should be taken down. That letter was given to the code enforcement people. Dave Wilson of the code enforcement tasked that to one of the code enforcement officers. They went out, responded back. It's in the minutes of their log, or whatever it's called, that there was no contact with me, that no action was required. So I just wanted to make it very clear that I have never been asked to take that sign down. I have never refused to take it down. If anybody ever asked me to, I am of the character that I would respond and take care of a problem that I had made or I had made an error in one way or the other. And I would have removed the sign, and maybe I would have questioned after it was done, but I would have followed through on it. That being said, I think my character is pretty well-known in the city. And because of the person that I am, I think the City Council deserves to have people on it of a high character. And I am officially announcing my candidacy for the position of City Council member.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Congratulations. I got a comment on that one.
The next speaker.
Mr. Fleming.
Councilor Lopez.
I want to remind you that when we were, when you were the president, or when John was there at the meeting at the VVBA, and the city made me remove mine, we mentioned it then to you that you have an illegal sign, too. So it was mentioned to you a long time ago.
No one has ever directed you to take the sign down.
Well, we mentioned it right there at the city, at the VVBA, that anyone having roof signs, and that's when it was mentioned to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
In response to that quickly, I mean, because I don't want to go this long, but. In response to that quickly, I mean, because I don't want to go this long, but I was the president of the Vista Village Business Association. We did have a discussion on signs, but we did talk about different signs in the city. Patsy Chou and the planning department had done a, had agreed to do a research project where they would take an inventory of all the signs in Vista and make determinations from that. I have never received any further communications.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
So, your sign was not illegal?
No one's ever told me it was legal. As far as I know, that sign was there as long as I've been there. The building's been there longer than 1959. There's been a shoe repair shop there that whole time. I assume the sign was there. All I know is since I've been there in '85, when I went to work there, the sign was there.
Well, thank you for following through.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Our next speaker is Dana, is it Hosford? Yes.
... My ankle, so I'm trying not to fall too quickly on my heels. Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Dana Hosford, and I'm from Vista Community Clinic's Tobacco Control Program, and we are here today to thank you for banning hookah lounges, for protecting young adults and teens who see smoking hookahs as a rite of passage and often serves as an introduction to smoking. As you know, hookah smoke penetrates deeper into your respiratory tract, making it more dangerous than cigarettes. 20 minutes of hookah is the same as smoking 100 cigarettes. Hookah tobacco contains the same chemicals found in all tobacco, including nicotine and carcinogenics. Secondhand hookah smoke is just as harmful as secondhand cigarette smoke. The health effects of tobacco are significant, and we are pleased the council took this important step to protect Vista's young residents. We would ask the council consider going a step further by expanding smoke-free protections to outdoor dining areas as well. We would love the opportunity to come back and present on this topic at a future council meeting. Again, thank you for always looking out for the health and well-being of Vista.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our remarks. So, I'm going to start with Councilor Lopez.
Thank you. Let's not forget tomorrow night, Taste of Vista. It's going to be quite a night. We also had a new company open up, Mother Earth, I think it was Saturday. Did any of you see it Saturday?
Yeah.
I mean, there was thousands of people there that night. They've done a great job there and a nice addition to the downtown. We're going to have a ribbon cutting for them tomorrow at 3:30, so hope you can make it there and have a good time tasting food tomorrow night.
Taste of Vista starts at 4 until, I think, till 7.
Till 7.
Yeah, so it's $20, $25 at the door, $20 for a ticket, but they got lots of restaurants and lots of delicious food. So, Councilor Coles.
Yes, that, hopefully, it's had a lot of good publicity, and we'll all be able to come out and stroll through and see what good dining opportunities are here in Vista. And it's been a good week, a good two weeks since the last meeting. I think the city's held together nicely. I want to thank you for congratulating us on our action with the hookah lounges, and I, too, would certainly entertain thoughts of at least exploring, you know, smoking conditions on dining areas in Vista, outdoor or indoor, because it can be very detrimental not only to the health of the people dining, but also just to the enjoyment of dining. If there's ever a way to look, I mean, there are a number of cities in our region who have done that, and I would be curious to know the effects, the impact on the business, whether it's been, you know, we certainly are a business-friendly council. We want to help our businesses do well, and in some measure, this may benefit the businesses. I don't know. But it would be nice to see some studies or some anecdotal information on what outdoor smoking contributes to a community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilor Aguilera.
I just want to remind everyone that I believe we have the opening of Moonlight, or the first show, Moonlight, this week, so hopefully everybody can get out to that. And remind everyone that July 4th is next week, celebration of our country's birthday, and I believe we're still trying to raise money for the fireworks show, which will go on. So, thank you.
Yeah, 4th of July event. Illegally Blonde is our first show, which starts, actually, it's, the grand opening is tomorrow night, so, I mean, it should be really a great show. So, 4th of July event, and what are the charges on that to get in the door now, this year?
It's $5 to get into the amphitheater as individuals. I think children under the ages of five or 10 are free, and if you're going to have dinner there, then it's $60 per person.
Yeah.
And I want to throw one more.
Also Alta Vista.
Yeah, Alta Vista Gardens is also having a dinner up at the top, so you can see the fireworks as well, and it's $55.
On sale up there.
What's the menu at those two different ones? The two different...
DK Catering will be catering the Moonlight Amphitheater dinner.
Yeah, but what will it be?
Dave's, Dave's is going to be catering Alta Vista Gardens. It'll be ribs, chicken, just a traditional... It'll also be, it'll be barbecue at the Moonlight as well.
Sounds delicious. Okay. Next, let's see, I had, oh, I, well, one thing, the Scottish Highland Games were this weekend, and they were very, very busy Saturday. They were lots of, lots of men in kilts. Okay. And then also on Sunday, we had the volunteers of the Ranch of Buena Vista, all the volunteers. We had a luncheon for them. We have coming up on August 4th and 5th, the Smokin', Smokin' Classic Barbecue, Smokin' Q, is it Smokin' Q?
Smokin' Q.
Smokin' Q Classic Barbecue, and then also the rod runs coming up on that weekend. National Night Out is on Tuesday, October 7th, and the reason I'm telling you these things is because our council is actually dark in July, so our council's dark. Our other meetings aren't. We still have Sand Egg and all of our other meetings, but our council will be dark in July, and we'll be back in August. So, anyway, this is the, what's it say? This is 10th Annual Visit. What did you write down here?
It's the Vista National Night Out, which is the 10th Annual Vista National Night Out.
Oh, the 10th Annual Vista Night Out, okay. I got a little note from Patrick telling me that. Okay, so with that, if there's nothing else for the order, we are adjourned. Good. Did I say it wrong? Why am I not, well, we'll be here, we'll be here for that. Oh, no, okay. Oh, I forgot to...
It's all right.
I can't see there. Is he here?
Yeah, he's, he's there.
Can you turn me on? Turn me on. Yeah, hold on. Hey, one other thing here, I'd like to take the opportunity to say goodbye and galact to our Union Tribune reporter back there, yeah, Nathan Schwarm, who's leaving the Union Tribune at the end of the summer. We appreciate his accurate reporting on the city of Vista and your help in publicizing our events. Thank you so much, and good luck in law school. Hope you come back to Vista as an attorney.